Hi, Linnell.
Hi, Mike.
Good evening.
How are you?
I'm good. How are you?
Well, thank you. Hot.
Hot, yes, me too. I have my frosty water.
Good thinking. Hi, Sylvia. Hi, Rick.
Am I correct that we're just waiting for Director Anatoly and not Director Sheris Watt?
Hi, Chris.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
I figured I'd go blur. That seems to be the current trend.
Yeah.
Oh, you know what? I'm having I'm having trouble with my video because my toolbar is obscuring the button to alter the video.
Right, hitting the minimize the so that you don't have the full screen and then you can move it around.
Right. Okay, here we go.
And again, Director Sheris Watt. Tendency.
That should help. Can everyone make sure that Eileen is not waiting in the waiting room?
Don't see her. She may be in the closed session meeting. I've made that mistake.
Well, let me check with her.
Oh, please resend the link. I cannot find it. Okay.
Apologize to our to join us.
I just resent it. The screen is freezing. Connection has been lost, but it's going to come back. There it is.
Okay, I'm gonna wait another three minutes, but at 7:10 I'm gonna have to start, so. She you resent the link, correct?
I can't find the link, though. I resent it this morning. I saw that. I got it.
After you log on to the meeting via the website, then you can promoter.
That's true. Let me see if that's gonna work.
Okay, she's on.
Okay.
There she is.
Okay, Eileen, I see that you're on, so we're gonna call the meeting to order. Good evening. I am Sylvia Hassai, President of the KPP CSD Board. It is April 7th, and we're gonna call the meeting ordered. I apologize for the difficulties, but it does happen with Zoom, as everybody knows. I will ask the clerk to take our role, please.
Director's deputy. Vice President Logan.
Here.
Director Anatoly.
Here.
Director Sheris Watt is not present, and President Hassai.
Okay, I'd like to welcome you to a special meeting of the KPP CSD. There are a lot of individuals on our call today, and so I'm just going to read the protocol for speaking. Because we have so many, we're gonna not be able to keep to the three-minute limit because it will be way too much if everybody speaks. You'll be listed in the order that you raise your hand. So individuals that wish to address the board concerning any special meeting items or on the agenda are invited to make oral comments of I'll have to look at how many want to speak before we decide how long. I think it's gonna end up being one minute because there's 60 people or more on the call. If everybody decides to speak. Please raise your hand, and you'll be called on by me, and you'll be unmuted. You can address the Board of Directors. And state, if you don't mind stating your name clearly, it helps in keeping accurate minutes, but it's not required. Please address your comments to the board and not to staff or others in the audience. By law, we're not permitted to undertake any action or discussion on any item that's not on the posted agenda. So if you have anything that's not on our agenda, we cannot discuss that, and this is a time for comment at this point. The only item for the public session is a an architectural consultant service contract. This is going to be introduced by our GM, Rick Benson, interim GM. And there seems to be some misconceptions about why this item is here today by the board to pursue some information through architectural services, and this is on because we did not authorize an amount or a contract at this point, or a letter of engagement. G provide as much information upfront to try and address some of the concerns that we've been hearing about from the public. That would be great, and then we'll go to board comments and public comment.
Yeah. Yes, members of the board, at your March meeting, there was a full discussion and a report given by Director Sheris Watt and Director Deppi regarding the possibility of looking at relocating in the park. The reason this was brought was discussed at that previous meeting was that your board has already taken a look at many, many other sites. To give a bit of a recap, you looked at commercial properties throughout Kensington, and there's not a whole lot of them. There was a great deal of effort put into looking, one at 303 Arlington, which did not work out. Following that, we also addressed trying to find a location possibly on East Bay Mud property. We talked to the Municipal Utility District, and they didn't feel that any of their property was compatible. There's been some private residences looked at, new construction was looked at. There really were, there were a couple of buildings that we thought might be promising, but the owners were reluctant to sell or lease to the district. So at the conclusion of that meeting, your board gave me direction to review and explore the possibilities of using Building E and the annex for housing of services for the police and administrative staff. You gave me direction to take action, to hire a consultant to analyze and prepare reports for the board in order to make an assessment. That's where we are today. I did contact an architectural firm, the firm of Swat Myers. They are the same people who did the review with 303 Arlington, and this is very much the same kind of process you took at 303 Arlington. I want to stress that there's been some misunderstanding out there from some people regarding the item on tonight's agenda. Your board is not making any decision about where to relocate the district's facilities tonight. That is not the subject that was agendized, and it would be improper for your board to make such a decision. So that is not what is being discussed tonight. Simply what's happening tonight is we've identified an architectural firm that I believe will do a good job to help us make a decision. And I'm asking your board to give me the authority to sign a contract with that firm. Again, this does not mean that your board is making any commitment to to relocate within the park. I did go with these folks, first of all, because they've worked with us before, and they did good work. But secondly, and it's important to understand, part of the assessment is an overall assessment of the suitability of the proposed location. That includes looking at everything, not just the physical structure, but it includes reviewing egress in and out. It also includes review of parking and other factors that would be important in the location of a police department. So in order for your board to do its due diligence and explore this option, explore all the options, I am recommending that you do authorize me to enter into an agreement on behalf of the district with Swat Myers Architects so that we can get that work done and continue on the search for a new location for the district offices.
Okay, I realize that I need to provide the public with an opportunity to comment first on items on the closed portion of the agenda, so I, if you could, if you're, the closed portion of the agenda is items that relate to hiring of the general manager and negotiations for temporary space on San Pablo Avenue in El Cerrito. Raised and wants to, only raise your hand right now if you want to speak on the closed session portion, and then we will address the item that General Manager Benson just raised. Am I missing any of the closed session items? I don't have my full agenda in front of me, but I believe those are the two items that were the closed session. Okay, so anyone who's gonna speak now is gonna speak on one of those two items, and then we will go back to the the architectural piece. So I'm gonna go to the attendees now and give people an opportunity to speak about, again, the temporary relocation negotiations on San Pablo Avenue and the search for a general manager. So if your hand is up, that's what you'll be addressing, and for that you can have up to, I'm gonna give folks up to two minutes for that. Sylvia. Sylvia Rosales, you can unmute yourself and then make your comment.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I am speaking on the overall issue of the board approaching the location of the police and the usage of or decisions about taxpayers' money. We, the community approved back in the 90s buying the property of the park. And in 1998, we dealt with the issue of a different board that was trying to locate the police into the park property.
Excuse me, excuse me.
Sorry, Sylvia, Sylvia.
Actually, this matter is not on the special meeting agenda, and neither is it part of the closed session agenda, so this is something that would need to be offered during public comment at a regular meeting. The closed session items that are appropriate for comment now are the two that were listed by President Hassai, and then, of course, after the
Well, if I may, I think it is, because you are discussing a contract to a consultant that is
Sylvia, 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 I really, I just want to be clear, we have to follow the proper process, and right now, only two items are available for comment, and that is the the negotiation to go to El Cerrito or to hire a general manager. And those are closed session items. Those are the two that right now you can speak about.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I know it's frustrating, but a special meeting is different than a regular public meeting as well. All right, I'm going to Okay, David, David is next, David Fike. David, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Great, thank you. Yeah, thank you very much for the time. I will also reserve some comments for the public session, but just to say while you're talking in the closed session about negotiating for space in San Pablo for the relocation of the police. As a community, we're very concerned and want to support you. Temporary. We want to, we want to support you as a board in providing us with the best police protection service that we can have, as well as community services. And we do not still understand as a community why the fire board is evicting the police from the building in, and we want to talk about that in the context of real temporary relocation. So for that reason, I think all that we're gonna talk about in the public session, the public comments are related to also what you're talking about in the closed session about negotiating space in San Pablo. We see you in a very difficult position trying fire, and we want to understand how the community can best support what is best for our community as a whole. So thank you for the comment, and we'll take, thank you for the time to comment, and we'll have more opportunity to talk in the public session, I'm sure.
Okay, thank you. Okay, there is someone named Mark. You should unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Directly associated to the discussion of relocating or negotiating to relocate the Kensington Police Department to across the street from the Dorina Stessel on San Pablo, north of Moser. Per the general manager's recommendation, I respect your consideration. Because of your plan to explore one, negotiations to move UC across from the Dorina Stessel, I, the community is very concerned because of the negotiation that with the police force that is not adequately staffed to handle its workload already, that you, the police board, and every Kensington family owes our police chief and our police officers a deep, deep debt of gratitude for their work. If that's not directly related, I don't know what it is. And whatever I do, I worry deeply about employer retention. I really do. Accordingly, I hope the police board can see its way through to, as an act of respect for them and the work that they are doing to keep us safe, to please consider issuing them the police chief and the police officers at least a bonus or a raise to all of our officers as the board carries forth their historic and disruptive relocation to the El Cerrito Dorina Stessel location, if you might call it that. In other words, our chief and officers have enough on their hands already with this staffing issue. They're very understaffed and working their butts off without complaints. They work hard, so hard to keep us safe. So tell me I'm wrong. I say give them a raise or at least a bonus for having to go through this. As for the fire board's eviction of the Kensington Police Department for the, from the Kensington Police Public Safety Building, you, the police district, are sitting on a virtual goldmine, a buildable property with virtually no restrictions, thanks to the taxpayers. I'm one of them. In opinion, your assets are cause for celebration, actually. Please consider the reasonable solution of, one, not booting the kids from the park. Two, being adult in the room. And three, and don't interrupt me, building either a police station or dual-use public safety building.
Okay, I am going to mute people, and I will interrupt them. We have a very big number of people who want to speak. It's been made very clear, based on the Brown Act and various processes, what we can talk about right now. I will unmute you. Please stick to the two closed session items. Thank you. You have another minute. You can unmute yourself again, Mark. You can unmute yourself. I cannot see anybody. Everybody is frozen. There is no sound. All right, I heard Mike.
You heard my cough?
I did. I'm sorry. This is really a poor connection. I'm not quite sure why. We have an account that allows for up to 100 people, and we're not at that mark. All right, I'm going to, I'm gonna remove Mark from the queue. I will allow him to come back. If I see him still there, I assume he's there. Okay, I'm gonna never had so much trouble with Zoom before. Mark, can you unmute yourself? Paul and Vida Doro, can you try to unmute yourselves?
Yes, if you can hear us, Sylvia.
Yes, I can. Thank you.
Thanks a lot. There are two of us behind this login. So, and we each have separate comments to make specifically on the closed session item having to do with the relocation to temporary quarters on San Pablo Avenue. So Vida will speak first, and then I'll speak, if that's okay, and we'll keep it short.
I just have a simple
Thank you.
I just have a simple I have a simple question, Sylvia. How temporary is temporary? Are we talking about six months down on San Pablo, or are we talking about six years? And I bring that up because it took almost four years for this board to decide not to take a stand on the public safety building usage for the police. So I appreciate knowing what's your definition of temporary. Thank you.
Okay, second, second comment is from Paul Doro. My reference here for for the record here is Government Code Section 61100. And I'll read this with some ellipses for omitted material to just to convey the sense of it. This is the section of the Government Code that authorizes community services districts and enumerate quote, "Within its boundaries, a district may do any of the following," colon, dot, dot, dot. Subsection I, "Provide police protection and law enforcement Subsection I, provide police protection and law enforcement services by, dot, dot, dot. Operating a police department. Now that all needs to be read as one sentence. Reading it as one sentence for the relevant parts. It is within its boundaries, a district may operate a police department within its boundaries. So I think that before you get too far down the road in negotiations to rent quote unquote temporary quarters in El Cerrito. You should have a deep dive into the question of whether that would be permissible within the context of your fundamental authorizing statute. To me, the plain language says it is not. Now you should be looking for temporary quarters within the boundaries of the district. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I'm gonna try to get Mark to finish his comment because I do not want to end on a sour note. To talk, Mark, you can, there you go.
I'm good, actually, I want to thank Paul, you know, I'm the emotional one here, I guess, and Paul is the legal guy. And I think he's right, I think.
You win me.
Hello?
Yeah, you're there.
I think the reasonable thing is to give the police chief what he wants in terms of square footage, but keep it in Kensington. And that's good, we're good. The chief is, we, we're blessed with this chief and these police officers. You have, I will tell you, you have done, as a journalist, I'm telling you, I did this all my life. An incredible police force. So give them, can we give them what they need in Kensington?
Thank you.
I'm done.
All right, thanks. Okay. Gillette. You should be able to unmute yourself, Pat.
Yeah, thank you, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, so first of all, the reason we're in this position is because, as I think Vida noted, it took four years for this board to begin to think about where are we going to house the police. So having got us into this position to now say that you're considering moving the police down to El Cerrito, which is all the way down Mosher in front of the. Wonder how we're going to deal with response time, with safety issues, with morale, with the calls that will come in from El Cerrito that our people will be required to respond to and mutual assistance. All of a sudden Kensington doesn't have a police presence anymore, is that going to affect crime? I just don't understand why we would even be giving this any thought to move our police, which are local and independent, down to El Cerrito, where they will be far away from the community they serve. There are many people in this community who are extremely upset about this. And I hope that for once, this board will actually listen to the community, not just sit there and take in these comments, but actually consider what the community is saying and make a different decision. Nobody wants our police in El Cerrito, we told you that when you tried to contract out. And we're telling you it again. We don't want our police in El Cerrito, we want them in Kensington. So find a way to get yourselves out of the mess that you got us into. Thank you very much.
Okay. Kevin Fitz, Kevin, you.
Yeah, this is Kevin Price, a long term Kensington resident. I think that we need to cut to the chase and move on to the next part of the session. That's all, that's my only comment.
Thank you. Katya De Nier Guard, oops, hold on a minute. Okay, Katya.
Yes.
Hi, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Thank you. Yes, I wish to agree with the previous speaker to definitely keep the police in Kensington. Just that makes total sense. I want to encourage you to start meeting with the public in person again. I feel like we've lost touch with one another over the last two years and it's less necessary now. The community center is pretty. Seeing people want to could wear masks. The main thing I wanted to talk about is the proposal to turn building E into, into a permanent police department. Is this the right?
No, it's not, it's not. So just wait, the only two items right now are the negotiations to temporarily house the police on San Pablo Avenue in El Cerrito and the hiring of a new GM. So if that's, if you're done, I will go on to the next person.
Yeah, well. Agreeing that it's so important to keep the police in Kensington, otherwise we're just not going to have, have police, effective policing.
Thank you. Lynn, you can unmute yourself and make your comment.
Hi, I understand that the fire department will be relocating to the First Unitarian Church. Why is it that the police department cannot also do so?
Okay, any other comment? Okay, thank you. Kevin Padian. You should be able to unmute yourself and go ahead and speak.
Thank you, Sylvia, I just want to say that personally, I don't have a problem with the temporary relocation of the police down to El Cerrito. The chief seems happy with the facilities, which are much larger than at present, the public safety building. Recall that the police can patrol, fire cannot. And we are unincorporated in unincorporated areas typically. The kind of handle calls, they go from a central location. It could be Martinez, it could be Santa Rosa. But in my experience in the rural areas, they are patrolling and they are around and they are dispatched really quickly. I think that the community would be very much reassured if they knew that the patrols would not change. Because we don't care where the administration is. A lot of times people say, well, if there's a police car at the gas station, we're really happy. Because that slows down speeders. We understand that. And so I think maybe the thing to do is if the chief could reassure people that a move to El Cerrito services whatsoever, and when it's done, it's coming back. And this board could reassure the public that no, it is not trying to merge with El Cerrito because you know that's in the wind too. It always is. Those are just two suggestions, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so that concludes the portion of public comment that is devoted to items that are part of the closed session agenda. Now, the general manager has presented the item around the contract for architectural services. I'm going to ask board members if they would like to comment, I am finding that the, my screen at least is frozen, but I see Director Deppe is going to begin the discussion. So Director Deppe, you should go ahead and start.
It's just really a clarification and we could get into that when we have our discussion, but I think for the public. At the presentation last month, it wasn't simply the police department and administration in the building was also moving or at least looking at relocating headquarters of the KCS recreation program into the annex. I mean, that's what the presentation was, so it's not simply, I'm again, we have to talk about the architectural scope, but just so the public is clear, what we talked about last month and what I'm hoping this proposal is is not just the police and administration, but also what to do about the KCC. So it's all rolled into one, so it's not that we're, I'm assuming at least just kicking the KCC out and there's not any room for them, it's a move for them and it's a, well, it's a move for everybody.
Yes, I completely agree and and everything is on the table in the sense that whether that's a renovated annex, a who knows what, we don't know, and this is very similar to the process we undertook when we began to look at the community center. It was the architect who then looked at all the needs of the various stakeholders to figure out what was necessary. And at this point, it is extremely preliminary. We don't know that, how any of this is going to work and that's why we're hiring someone who's got expertise and who's, can, you know, everyone is asking us to think out of the box and this is part of out of the box thinking and it's also that we don't have the luxury of any other options. I would encourage people to review last month's presentation and memo by Director Sheriff Swat, which recapped at least the last twelve to maybe eighteen months of efforts to find other locations. It was only a couple, a year ago about that we are maybe a little bit more that we knew that the fire board was moving into a fire only scenario, we were. And now we are looking for both a temporary and a permanent location. Any other board members wish to make any comments? So yeah, I really would encourage folks to also, you know, read the KCC's own paper, which was reported on the police board considers landing spots, an article written by the editor Linna Do, which says over and over again that, for example, oh well, that's on a closed session item, but there is information in there about the. I think it's, you know, important to get the full scope. We're now going to go to attendees who wish to comment on this item if there's no more board comment at this time. And so we're going to start with Sylvia Ellsbury. And right now, I don't have enough hands to warrant limiting, again, everyone who wants to speak on this item, please raise your hand because I'm going to have to manage the time. And if everybody raises their hand, I need to account for that. Hi, you are now unmuted.
Hi, so I'm Sylvia Ellsbury, speaking for the board of the KCC Kensington Community Council and the community from our constituents, your constituents, is that we really need you to explain how you got to what really appears to be a consensus to put the police in the park with little to no public input and verifiably no input from the KCC regarding the recreation programs and our use of the park. And what we're hearing from people is that there's something really wrong with this picture. Your proposals would force major. KCC provided families in our community. But you don't seem to have considered the impact that this policy that you're talking about would have on those families. And not only has KCC been excluded from your discussion, but the whole community has been excluded. And this goes back to at least February when we, KCC, were not notified that that proposal would be on your February agenda. So it was just two months ago that you really started raising this idea of building E becoming a police station and people really felt blindsided and this is really the big message that I want to carry to you tonight. So parent in the community and we also are out here feeling like getting mixed messages from the board. Because we heard you Sylvia say to everybody, don't, don't panic, you know, we've got you to families and children and recreation. But we, and we took your assurances in good faith. But then we actually heard nothing from your board. Even from Director Sheriff Swat, who I reached out to personally to thank for creating the ad hoc. Was the agenda presented your full blown agenda packet, which was, and this is something I really need the community to know. That presentation, which you can view on the KPPCSD website, you can watch the video, I've watched it many times. It was completely uninformed by data from or dialogue with the KCC, which is the recreation program of Kensington for KPPCSD. So I'll wrap up because I want to hear from other people, but the community really needs you to start working with KCC fairly and openly. Please stop excluding KCC from your process and reaffirm the value of our partnership that we have with you, the district. We have a spot on your agenda next week, thank you for that. No substitute for working relationship. And we're worried about the hiring of architects because it feels like more people coming to work around us rather than working with us. So we really want you and the architects to come to the park when school lets out preferably so you can see what it looks like. Visit our recreation director in building E and please work with us and not around us. Okay, thanks so much.
Thank you. Okay, the next person on the list is named Stephanie. Right, Stephanie, you should unmute yourself if you care to give your full name, it's helpful for the record, but you don't have to and you have up to three minutes.
I'll be very swift. Thank you very much to the board for your service. And I would just like to say in terms of either temporary or permanent placement of the police department. How about, I understand that behind Ace Hardware wasn't available, but was imminent domain considered? Since there's so much park, parking available there and entry and egress possibilities. That's my comment, thank you.
Thank you. Katya De Nier Guard. You could go ahead and unmute yourself.
Thank you, can you hear me?
Yes.
Katya De Nier Guard, I strongly feel it's premature to hire an architect to look at these two sites. In the case of the annex, the annex, one of the two classrooms in the annex was my fifth grade classroom in nineteen fifty nine to nineteen sixty. And even then, it was very decrepit leftover from World War Two. And as an adult, I strongly suspect it has some severe toxic problems like asbestos tiles were commonly used then. And also asbestos siding, those shingle things which is painted over. The building is a mess and I wouldn't recommend trying to renovate it. If you're going to do anything, why don't you get new modular units? And you certainly wouldn't want to put children in that building, even if it was renovated, I'm talking about the annex. In terms of building E, I'm, I, as you know, am a long time resident, I go to the park every day. And putting the police department in the middle of the park would just sort of, I think, ruin the park. I mean, you wouldn't really go to recreate on the lawn of the police department. That isn't where people would go to have a picnic normally. And it would just, that whole area of the big grassy areas is what most people use and it's used a lot. And also the KCC program is incredibly valuable to the community. It's a successful, long time education and recreational program serving generations of Kensingtonians. I can't imagine losing it and it perfectly fits building E. It's like form and function are married. The building itself is sort of classic, I wish it had a, you know, some sort of heritage protective designation.
You're at three minutes, Katya.
So is that it?
You're at three minutes, sorry.
Is that over then?
Well, you can wrap up.
Okay, well. Okay, well. Yeah, please don't change building E. Please, please leave the KCC recreation programs there. And please consider putting the police department in modular units, for example, in where the annex is now, or possibly in, in a some other place. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Um, I, I'm going to have to really insist for now. We have much, many more hands have gone up. I want so I'd like to see if folks can try to go for two minutes if they're able to, so I can really want to hear from everybody. Okay. Paul and Vida Doro. Uh, you can go ahead and speak.
Uh, thank you Sylvia. This is a comment on items not on the agenda. You referred several times to how many people are on the Zoom. You know, but we don't. And one of the downsides of meeting remotely, as we have been doing now for a long time, is that there is no sense of what's going on in the room. You can't read the uh, reactions of, of your constituents who are in the audience. You can see their names.
This is not on the agenda. Could you please do something about it?
Hold on, hold on, hold on. I, I agree. This is, this is not a, a comment. We've got to keep to the agenda comment. So that's something you could let us know at another time through an email.
Or comments on items not on the agenda.
No, no, this is on comments that are now, we've, we did comments on the closed session items. Now we're on comments for the architectural consultant services.
So there's no opportunity for comments not on the agenda?
I'll ask the general council to clarify, but I thought that for special meeting, it's for items only on the agenda. If I'm wrong, but I think.
That, that is correct. If a special meeting, it's limited to items on the agenda at regular meetings, such as the one we will be having next week. Uh, then you do have an opportunity to comment on items that are not agendized.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, okay. Is there any, is there any comment you wish to make about this item before I, because once I, I'm giving everyone one chance to speak if you want to say anything more. Okay. Danielle Madugo. Hello. You should be able to unmute. Hi.
Um, good evening. I'm Danielle Madugo and I'm a Kensington resident and have a nine-year-old in KCC programs. I do not support hiring architects to evaluate the conversion of building E to a police community services building. I do support the KPPCSD hiring an architect towards assessing the feasibility of housing both districts in one building. So far, there are two possible parcels available to this end along the Arlington south of the library and the church parking lot parcel at the corner of Arlington and Arlemot requiring a land swap, uh, land, not swap, land swap as suggested by uh, Sylvia Ellsbury online on Nextdoor. Interim General Manager Benson did not mention either of these sites in his review on explored sites. Both parcels are three hundred to four hundred feet away from the mapped active trace of the Hayward Fault. And the parcel on the Arlington frontage wouldn't be visible from the picnic area from the park and basketball area, just like you don't notice the library from the children's playground. I implore the board members to redirect your attention towards providing property, either the church parking lot parcel or south of the library along the Arlington for the fire district to use to build a new building for both districts. It's not too late. Thank you.
Katie Brohan.
Can y'all hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, I just want to say ditto everything Danielle just said. Ditto everything Sylvia said at the start of this. I think you're going to hear a lot of that tonight. I hope so, but I do just want to point out to the board. You, you would have heard about ten times more had you held this meeting not on school vacation week when many, many families are out of town. And you also switched the meeting time an hour later. And that makes it very, very difficult to get a good pulse on what families are thinking. So again, I agree with everything Danielle just said, but I hope you realize that you would have heard, heard a lot more voices echoing that sentiment had you held this next week. And so I am glad that there is another meeting next week, but just keep that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you. I think that was everything. You muted yourself. I think that you were done. So, okay. Oh, if she's trying to line in, would you keep an eye on for that, um, Lanell in the meeting? Because um, she didn't seem to quite finish and she did disappear. Kevin, you should unmute yourself.
Yeah, this is Kevin Price. I grew up on Windsor Avenue. And I used to play in that park before it was a park, when it was an abandoned schoolyard. I'm so appreciative of the efforts of the community to turn this into a community park. And would absolutely object and hate to see it turned into a police station of any sort. A police station does not belong in a community park. That's my comment.
Oops. If I could ask folks to lower their own hands after they've spoken, it would be helpful to me in managing the meeting. And Maureen, better, you are next.
Thank you. Good evening, board. I'm the mother of parks, and who spent, who've been active participants in case of after-school programming since kindergarten. We spend countless hours in the park and since the pandemic drove social gatherings outdoors, our local park has become even more important, not only for recreation and exercise, but also as a much-needed social outlet key to our mental health. I was surprised to learn that building E and the annex are being considered as locations to house our police department. As an area where kids are biking, playing and running around, in addition to taking after-school classes, does not seem like an ideal location for, ideal location for police station traffic. Accessing egress through a quiet residential street could also be problematic. I urge the board to needed and appreciated park space away from our kids in our community. For example, if the lightly-used north end of the library parking lot could be feasible, please explore that option. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mark. Just unmute yourself. Mark Constantini. You just need to unmute yourself if you wish. There you go.
All right. Uh, thank you in advance. And can you tell me in advance, so that I, I'm kind of new to this, I'm more of a a observer than a speaker, what I can't, can talk about here?
You are commenting on the rec, on the item before us, which is to approve a contract to assess, uh, you know, concept designs and just to understand whether this is even feasible around parks, you know, the, the item on the, that's all, that's the only item you're speaking on.
Okay. Um, okay, well, I think that the concept design thing is probably pretty inert. But the overall concept of putting the police in the middle of the park where you have, you know, virtually unlimited buildable property available to you uh, as an alternative. It's already paid for with the Kensington tax.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't hear what you said about unlimited. I couldn't hear your comments about unlimited. What kind of property?
Buildable property, for example, next to the, uh, which isn't even in the same next to the library, uh, while you would kick the kids out. So if you want to do the, the drawings, fine, but why kick the kids out? Just do something next to the library. I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Jenny is next person to speak.
Hi, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. I am a mom to two kiddos at Kensington Hilltop, and I think it is absolutely premature to be hiring an architect. Seems completely inappropriate. Um, and it would ruin the atmosphere. Um, my kids are involved in the KSEP classes. Um, they love that place up there and it just would completely change it. It's just not the place for the police to be. Um, again, I agree with some of the other speakers that calling this meeting during spring break seems very unfair. And I, my idea for the police is maybe a completely mobile police department.
Sylvia. Rosales, like, you should unmute yourself.
Hi Sylvia. Thank you so much for giving me the opportunity again to address my concerns. Um, I'm speaking of as a resident of Windsor Avenue, which is pretty much adjacent to I am also speaking as a parent and a grandparent of families and children who occupy the park heavily for recreation purposes. I truly appreciate the work that you do. Um, I know how context when the fire board comes to a decision to evict the police. However, the park cannot be the option. In your role is not only police services, but also recreation as part of community services. And I ask you to work with us, the community, um, having meetings, open meetings for decisions that involve our recreation. I am of the opinion that the fire district and your council, your district must be one organization. Because that's the only way how the community, our community's interests at large can be resolved. And, and avoid these territorial decisions that are uh, hurting the different interests of our community. We are a small community. We can, we should be all sitting down together, the fire board and your board and with the input of the community. And if there is a renovation going on in the actual building, police must be included in that building. There's, it, it doesn't make any sense to evict our police officers from there. And uh, so I ask you to uh, stop this decision of hiring any consultant. It's a very premature uh, decision. You need input from the community. And we're here to work with you for the interest of Kensington as a whole. Not just, you know, the fire board or where we're going to relocate the, the police for. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, Lisa Prange, correct?
Hi, my name is Lisa Prang. I am speaking today as a resident eight-year-old twin with a tent hilltop. And I wanted to share a brief story. Um, we are not lucky enough to have been longtime Kensington residents like so many of you. We actually moved um, you know, chatting with my husband and saying, this is the place where we want to raise our kids and where we want Kensington for the community and for the space. Um, and it would really be a shame for us to lose that with the police coming into the park. And I know that um, this is only a nine thousand dollar investment, but I think it's premature in terms of time effort. And I think it's a distraction um, from the things that we need to, from the alternatives we need to be looking at. I'm also um, representing the KCC advisory board, um, who would love to be included in these conversations, hilltop parents who would love to have been here if they weren't on spring break. Um, and the community as a whole who just loves and treasures the space and wants to make sure that we're using our time and resources more appropriately. Thank you so much for serving our whole community and have a good evening.
Thank you. Okay, uh, the next person is Sarah Hunt. I, I would encourage everybody to please do try to keep it brief. We are, I'm going to have to cut off comment uh, soon. And so I see that there are one, two, three, four, ten more people. And so that's another thirty minutes if everyone takes three minutes. So I'm going to um, ask if anyone else wants to raise their hand and comment, please do it now so I can manage the time properly. And if I, if folks could help us out by maybe um, trying to be a little more brief, I, I would appreciate it, but I understand that folks have, you know, strong feelings about this. Um, Sarah Hunt, you are the next person.
Hi, thank you. Yes, can you hear me? Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Um, so, um, you know, I'll keep it brief. I really echo pretty much everything um, against bringing the police uh, into this park that others have said, and I appreciate the solidarity. Um, I'm a immigrant rights attorney. My husband is a criminal justice um, attorney. We both firmly believe that police do way more harm than they help. Um, that is, it's just a fact. Um, and programs like those that are held at community centers, uh, working with young people, programs that, um, you know, engage with seniors, uh, programs like many of these people have said, that just have helped their mental health. That is what um, really makes communities safe, having safe spaces. Cops tend to alienate people. People don't want to be around cops. I would not want to go somewhere if a cop was there. When I see a cop, I go across the other side of the street. Um, and so I think um, I, I really don't appreciate the idea um, that just because EB Mud and other agencies have not come up with solutions, that that means that the community center needs to suffer. Um, it's twenty twenty-two. We can be creative. We don't need to just um, pretend like there aren't other options. I, I think you're hearing a resounding no from the community. Um, and if you really uh, value what the community says, if you really believe in justice, I think you really need to step back and realize that this is a misstep. Um, and you know, community centers are just the life force of, of any neighborhood. So I really would urge you to rethink your plans. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Derek Levens.
Yes, hi, my name is Derek Levens. Um, I'm also Windsor Avenue resident. And I'm also in favor of postponing or pausing. Uh, I think the, um, the assessment is premature. Because um, I think we have to realize that the park and the area around it is a very public place. You have a school just above it. You've got the library below it. We have a lot of traffic in this area. Um, pedestrian, people walking their kids to school. A lot of people walk those kids to school along Windsor Avenue. And I'm, I've been here for twenty years. I had two kids. Uh, they're both in college now. They both went to Hilltop. They both went through all the KCC, KSEP programs and um, our concern is, uh, especially on Windsor, is that it's possible that Windsor could become a police quarter. And so this, this is not just a, you know, not in my backyard type of issue. Um, it's also a safety issue. Because Windsor Avenue is very narrow. I don't know if you guys are aware of that. Um, it's a very busy street. It's a cul-de-sac. There's only one way in and one way out. So I would encourage you, uh, instead of doing the architectural assessment, to take a look at what's going on around here. Come down to where we live. See what it's like. You know, visit the park. See how busy the park is. You know, I don't know. I'm going to ask this question, you don't have to answer it, but do you have, do you guys visit the park? Do you know what it's like here? I think it's really important for all of you to really consider how much life there is, how much how much life there is, how much traffic there is through this area and how much it means to people. And how potentially disruptive it would be to put the police department in building E. That's my comment. Thank you.
Julie is the next name that's on the list. Please go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hi, my name is Julie Yamashita. And I'm thinking that this board is between a rock and a hard spot. And I'm sure none of you really want it to be in the park either, but you've investigated other things. My comment about the pending contract or the proposed contract is that it seems rather focused, that you've already said, well, the police need to be in building E and the annex could be made suitable for KCSUP. I would rather see a contract that was focused on turning the annex into what the police need and leaving building E as is. You've seen what it feels like to be kicked out by an authoritarian, sorry, you're out of here. I encourage you to not go that route with KCC. And look at the annex. And I agree, the annex is too moldy, it's probably too small. Don't think about remodel. It needs to be rebuilt if that land space can be used. That's my comment.
Thank you. Emily Jennings. Hold on one moment. You can, you should be able to unmute yourself and speak. Emily?
Great, yeah, I'm here. Sorry, it just kicked me over to somewhere else. As an educator, I think it's really important to center the youth voice in our decision-making. And I'm lucky enough to be joined by a nine-and-a-half-year-old who can speak to his opinion of what it means to move the park. So take it away, Winston.
Well, first off, it would cause a lot more trouble. Tons of kids use the park. We have almost built it in a complete society in the forests. It would be a complete tragedy if you had the police move there. And I speak for all the kids in 10 elementary. Everything from fifth graders to even the smallest kindergartner would be moved by it. And it would be dire to Kensington. Tons of people go there after school to enjoy KCC. And I do not like this treasony.
So I think it's really important as a parent, the KCC system is just such been a lifeblood for us. And they have fought so hard to come back out of the pandemic. And I'm sure you can all sympathize as parents of young kids, what it means to have somewhere safe that you can trust, especially after the pandemic. So I urge you to reconsider the park as a potential space for the police. And I do understand with so many other participants that you are between a rock and a hard spot with Kensington residents also saying keeping the police in town is really important too. But this just doesn't seem to be the right fit. Thank you.
Thanks. Just give me a sec. Justin, try unmuting and see if this works. Justin White.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay. Hi, Justin White Trout. So I'm, I'm against the proposal for architectural drawings. One idea which came up was what about putting portables in the lot across from the library? Again, it would take no architectural drawings. Also, we have one traffic light in our entire community. And obviously, there's a road survey to put that light there. So having a police presence there is more important than having a police presence anywhere else in our city. That's where our kids walk across the street to go to school. So if we had portables there, it would solve a couple of issues. It would, it would take care of the immediate issue. It would, you would not need to find an architect. And it, it could be done pretty quickly. And that's all. Thank you.
All right, next up is Kevin Padian. Kevin, try unmuting and see if that works.
I've done Sylvia, thank you. I need, I would like some clarification, please, because I don't think walking away from this, we fully understand. I'll get to that. I am fully committed to your proposal to having an architect walk out the buildings that you own to see how viable they are, what they can do. That's, that's, and I hope you have structural engineers because that's great. I'm really sorry about the language of eviction that people have used. First of all, the fire board is not evicting the police. The police department and the fire department both agree, they understand that the codes that have been improved since the last time that building was renovated require so much more space for both police and fire that they can't exist in the same building. You asked Chief Gankas, I mean, he will not disagree. And it's so tiresome to hear people say that. And frankly, I'm really sorry that this board, that this board does not get on board and say that this is the big lie for Kensington. It's not an eviction. It's not an eviction. Legally, we can't do it. We'd love to have everybody together. They've been a great relationship and we can't do it. As for Windsor, if the police occupy building E, you have two choices for egress. You can try to build a new road down to the Arlington. My guess is that the county will not let you do it because it's too steep and it'll be prohibitively expensive. And if you went down Windsor, you would have to take all the cars off the one side they could park on. Now, the Windsor people will complain, but I've walked there at five o'clock in the afternoon. I have walked the, as the neighbor suggested, I've been there. And none of the cars are in any driveways. They're all on the street. The driveways are empty. So if that were changed, that would have to be a county thing, people would have to park in their driveways, which actually is the longest places. My question is, Mr. Benson said at the outset of this meeting, the building E and the annex were going to be assessed for the police and administration. He said nothing. He said nothing. He said nothing about the KCC. I would like Mr. Benson to clarify, is this an expedition for the two buildings to be police only?
You have to wrap up.
I did.
Okay, thank you. And that, and that was addressed and the board is gonna have another opportunity to have a discussion. So I'm sure that much of what is being discussed here will be addressed, or at least I hope so. All right, Amy Dramel, you are up next. Just give me a moment. You should go ahead and speak. And again, I remind everybody, once you've done speaking, please lower your hand.
Hi.
Try again.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I think just in relation to the last commenter, I think it's important to note that that individual is a member of the KPFD or KFPD Board of Directors, just for members of the public on this call who don't know. I just wanted to say that I do understand the need to think outside the box for rehousing the police, but I want to strongly object to the use of Kensington Park for a police station location. If a consultant is hired, I do not think that they should consider the park as an option in their evaluation. We have a wonderful police force, several of whom I've met and spoken with in person. And I agree with what an earlier commenter said about giving them a raise or whatever may be possible to help with retention during this temporary period of upheaval. However, the park and the community programs are a big draw for members of the community and especially young families with children in Kensington Hilltop School who enjoy the park during their personal time, as well as make use of the exceptional after-school programs held in building E. A police station would completely disrupt this gem in the middle of the community. I'd also like to know if the public can do anything to help reopen the dialogue with the Kensington Fire Protection District and their move, well, the move to have the two districts separated and no longer together in the public safety building. I know for many on this meeting, it's old news that may be over and done with and we need to move on to finding new housing. But I don't understand why this decision was made over the objections of taxpayers, regardless of the changes that might need to be made to the building. I've read conflicting information about the arguments for and against moving the police out versus having them stay. I think that would be the ideal if there is any possibility for reopening negotiations between fire and police. And I'd be interested to know what steps could be taken to that end by members of the public who are members of this community with a vested interest in having them both centrally located and not in the park. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Robbins, you should be able to unmute yourself and oh, where'd you go? Hold on a moment. Something's going on with my all right, Chris Robbins, you were next and yeah, your hand is still up. So go ahead and try to speak, unmute yourself.
Hi, can you hear me now? Hello?
Yes. Yep.
Great. Uh, I'll keep it really brief. I don't support the police in the park and I don't support reaching out to architects to, to even bring it another direction, step toward police in the park. It just doesn't make any sense. I have kids at Hilltop. We've got the after-school programs that we're a part of and it just seems like it's really gonna change.
You just lost the ability to talk. Can you unmute yourself again?
Yeah, I'm, I'm just, I said basically what I'd like to say, which is I don't support it. I don't support the police in the park.
Thank you.
That's, that's it.
All right, that's great. I mean, thank you for the comment. Got you there, gonna. The next person to speak is Beverly James. You should be able to unmute yourself. Beverly? Beverly? Beverly, can you unmute yourself? All right, I'm gonna try to come back to Beverly again. They, no, she's not there, okay.
Now, can you hear me now? Yes, we can. Thank you. I just wanted to speak on your proposal to get an architect. From what I understand, it's focusing on the police in building E. As a former manager of a special district who went through a renovation, I think it's unrealistic to expect an existing building to meet the kind of safety standards that a police station needs. And it is apparent that the annex is basically a good candidate for demolition. If you're looking at any site in there, I think the architect should focus on the police going into the annex. I don't think that's a particularly great, I think you would be better off with a empty site that doesn't have an existing building on it. I just don't think it is at all realistic to think that one of those existing buildings will be a suitable safety building. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'm having some difficulties here with my screens today. All right, Farah, can you go ahead and unmute?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening. Good evening, board. I'm Farah Japaz, the mom of two youngsters at Hilltop and also on the KCSUP Advisory Board. You know, one of the reasons my family and I settled in Kensington was because of its tight community and what the park and its recreational facilities has to offer. Echoing all of what's been shared by other families on the call, you know, I ask that you really please reconsider a different location for
Oh. Okay, she's, hold on, Farah, hold on. Go ahead, start again. You should be able to unmute. Farah? You're back.
I'm here, I'm here, can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Take two. So good evening, everyone. I'm Farah Japaz, the mom of two youngsters at Hilltop, also on the KCSUP Advisory Board. I'm echoing everything that's been shared by other families on this call as well. You know, one of the reasons my family and I settled here was because of its tight knit community and all of what the park and recreational facility has to offer. And, you know, I urge you to please reconsider a different location for the police station. It will, I mean, having the police station at the park, like it's been, you know, shared by others, will change the dynamic of the park, the community and all those who heavily depend on it. So if you can, please reconsider. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna ask the clerk if she is a co-host to see whether she can help me remove Beverly James as a participant in the wrong screen. And in the meantime, I'm gonna finish up with the last two speakers. Although, David, I thought you already spoke on this, but if you did not, I apologize. And if you have not spoken on this matter, you can unmute yourself. David Fike.
This is David, I appreciate it, thank you. No, I did comment in the, about the closed session, but I appreciate the ability to comment on this as well. My name is David Fike. I'm the, I'm a former member of this board. I was, I ran and was elected on a platform in the early 90s to purchase and develop Kensington Park. At that time, 30 years ago, and I served four years on this board. At that time, 30 years ago, the community viewed this board, as it was called at the time, a community services board. It was not the Community Police Protection and Community Services Board. It was the Community Services Board. Because we viewed both recreation and police protection as important community services. I would also say that at that time, the presence and passion that you're hearing tonight about the new, from the newer residents of Kensington is reminiscent of what elected me to this board when I ran in the early 90s. Our first step, when we were concerned about what was going to happen to the surplus property that could have gone to development of housing instead of the park that we love, was to reach out to the KCC and to work with them about how could we turn this into the heart of an open space for this community? So I want to hearken back to the first comment that was made in this opening session by Sylvia Ellsbury, who I have not had the pleasure to meet personally, but I was so impressed with her comments. And I have to, she's the head of the KCC. And I have to say, I was And I have to say, I was shocked. Shocked to hear that she has not been informed, involved, and influential in the discussion prior to this meeting tonight about the open space. So I encourage you to, as many as others have said in this meeting, to pause before spending our dollars, our community taxpayer dollars, on hiring an architect to try to give some technical information about something that we feel so passionate about. And second, I encourage you to engage the families with young children, the Kensington families who represent the future of our town, about why we're in this predicament. Why we're not talking tonight to the members of our community who made the decision to put us in this predicament. Including Kevin Padian, who's participated in commenting tonight as a member of the Fire Board. Why are we in this predicament? This education process is beginning and is going on now in this community. And I invite you as leaders on this board to understand the change that we are advocating, to have a viewpoint from our leaders that is not isolated in silos and has a board of fire district members making decisions that are impacting us as a community so broadly. Thank you for the time to comment.
Thank you, David. The last comment today is going to be by Paul and/or Vida Doro. And you should be able to unmute yourself.
Thank you, Sylvia. This is Vida Doro. And first of all, I want to say, bravo, David Fike. Thank you for what you said. And my comment is, why do we need to spend $9,000 of taxpayers' money to get conceptual architectural drawings on a location that all you need to do is walk up and see that it's not feasible to be a police department? You don't have that ingress, egress.
Egress.
So I, I'm just baffled at how, and perhaps that I find it hard to believe that none of you, including your staff and the employees have walked up there to see that building E is not a feasible police department. Thank you, Sylvia.
Thank you. And that is gonna conclude, as I said before, that concludes our public comments. I'm sorry that there seemed to be some folks who have now decided to raise their hand, but I announced the end of public
He doesn't know.
Hold on, guys, you're still, you're still not, you're not, you're still muted. Are you still there? Alright. There are three people who want to comment, and I have to say, we've now far exceeded what we would normally do. I'm gonna give each of you a minute to please, you know, my board as well, who is, you know, we have a certain amount of time for public comment. I know this is an issue that people care about. I hope folks will continue to stay on because, you know, there's, the discussion continues on with the board. So Kevin, if this is Kevin Price, you've already spoken once, so I'm gonna skip you and come back if that's, because every member gets to speak once. I'm gonna go to John Price, and John, you should unmute yourself.
Hi, yeah, I'd just like to say, I, I support what Vida said and David Fike said. You know, you can spend $9,000. Some architect will tell you that it's feasible. It's not feasible. And it's a really bad idea. I mean, you, I can't get off of Windsor Avenue as it is. I just try to go to the grocery store. I can't get off Windsor Avenue. This is really crazy. And $9,000 on this is just a waste of $9,000. And there should be no police in the park. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Kevin, is this Kevin Price?
Yes, I just wanted to say that Vida
Okay, we, you only, you're only, you're only comment, you're only able to comment once, and I just can't. I, I'm gonna, you can write to us for more, but everyone gets to comment once. Sorry. Alright, that is the end of comment now, and we're gonna go to board discussion. I urge folks who've commented to stick around. Um, give me one moment. Okay. Sorry, my screen is acting a little bit weird, so it's been taking me a little longer to manage. Beverly James, unfortunately, I am gonna have to, you're, you're in, and David also, let me just, if I can. Okay. For some reason, I am unable to remove Beverly James from the participant panel, so is anyone else a co-host of this meeting? Now, are you a co-host? I'm not getting any signal or any sound.
Remove, I put Beverly James as an attendee.
Oh, thank you. Alright, I'm still having difficulty. So if there is a board member who wants to kind of begin the discussion on this, I would appreciate them raising their hand, and hopefully I will see that. Chris, Director Deppi.
Right, I just want to make sure that Rick addresses the, some, I don't know. I forget who brought it up, but as we spoke, this isn't just about the police and administration. This is about moving the KCC. Some, or what to do with the KCC. I guess that's a better way to put it, is that we recognize that the KCC has to be put somewhere. And so the architects are looking at all three, police administration and KCC and the two buildings and just, you know, make that clear. The other thing has been brought up, and I think it's important that architects or, I'm not sure if the architects can answer this, but how to get in and out of the police station is an important question and whether or not a road can be built down the hillside, that needs to be looked at. If Windsor is the only way, is that a practical solution? So I think that that's an important question that should be answered in this. In general, I would hope that after this, the architects look at it and produce some kind of report, presentation, that that would be the time that we could potentially make a decision or at least run, consider it. So is the goal of this to actually get to a point where we can make a decision? Or is this just one step along the way? So I think that should be clarified as well. But the one issue that didn't, I wasn't sure if it was gonna be addressed. And again, it's probably gonna take more like a structural engineer or maybe a county engineer. What to do about the getting in and out, if a police car needs to be getting, get in and out of the department. So those are my comments.
Director Natoli, and we'll, we'll give a chance for General Manager Benson to respond to that in a minute. Director Natoli.
Yes, I think that it's important to do the study. But I think I have been to the park. All of us have been to the park. All of us know the problems with Windsor Avenue. And I think it would be good to get the architect's opinion as to whether a road that would be parallel to the southern edge going from building E to Arlington is or is not feasible. I suspect it's going to be infeasible. And that just would help us eliminate an option, which I think many of us are not in favor of anyway. The other is with respect to the annex, I think it's important to look at the annex. And I think the consensus that I'm coming to is that it's not worth trying to renovate it. It needs to be torn down. What goes in to that space is a different issue, but I do think the architectural study is worthwhile. I was impressed with their work at 303 Arlington. And I'm glad that the same firm is looking into this issue.
Thank you, Director Logan.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that, that it's clarified, that there were some comments. There has been, there's no preferences, is, and we're looking at building E and, and, and the annex be used a certain way. We're, we're trying to get architectural opinion on this, and that's where we're at. And that's it. We're not, we have not get entered into discussions on the board of, of, we're gonna do this, and I'll just see if it works. That's not what we're doing. We're just, again, there, we're just at, we're just getting, getting an evaluation. Anyway, that, that, I just wanted to make sure that that's clarified.
Thank you. You know, I too want to, first of all, I walk to the park and I walk up Windsor Avenue very frequently. I'm a parent of a child at Kensington Hilltop, as is Director Sheriff Swat, who's had five children go through that school. And I've had two. I've also been a working parent who understands the value of the KSET programs. So for folks who don't know me and don't know Director Sheriff Swat or any of these folks here, I advise you to, you know, reach out and get to know us a little better. I ran on this board partly because, for two reasons, I would say. One was that I was very unhappy with the conduct, frankly, of the board previously and of the police department and felt that reforms were necessary. And I am very proud of the police department we have and the efforts we made to invest in that police department. So these steps are being taken in very close coordination with the advice of our staff, including the chief of police. And I walk the park intimately. And we, and the second reason I ran is I didn't think the park was getting enough attention to David Fike's point. I felt like we do do more than police services and the police were not being run well and were costing us a lot of money and legal fees and community incivility. And so I worked very hard to improve those things and to invest in the park. And I can list the investments this board has made in the park. Resurfacing the police court, redoing the steps down from Highland, removing all poison oak from the park and trimming dangerous tree leaves, limbs. So for folks who don't know me, I want you to know that about me. This board has also spent at least a year, more than a year, looking for options. And again, I urge you to look at the full listing of all addresses and options we have considered. So it would be wrong for us not to look at these options. Now, I agree with everything that's been said before. We are not wedded to any answer. We need consultation to think about some of the things that are possible with a person whose profession it is to do that. The option of not considering the park at all is no longer an option. We have avoided that option for several years, in my opinion. We have tried hard to guard against that. We are out of options, and something new may present itself, and we will continue. We're still looking at options. And we are not too far down any, this road. But we, we have to now give it some consideration. I agree that we have not, we have, it is, we said this to, last month, this decision was made last month. Right now, we are putting a dollar amount on the, on the contract and on the contract. But the decision to, to direct the general manager to do this was made last month. And I would encourage the general manager, as we are looking at this scope, again, we reiterate, it is for district administrative staff, police, and the recreation program. I would be open to the architect's opinion around this area of the parking lot. We don't own a certain area, we own another area. I know that in the past, we looked at putting a temporary location on the parking lot. And if I recall correctly, not only is expensive to bring utilities into that area, but is also a very, you're putting a very heavy weight on the parking lot that is not designed for that. So that is a cost. So if, I mean, we can have this discussion, but I would be open to, you know, a higher, a high, a high level of opinion of the architect's view of these things before we, you know, get into. We're not talking about getting detailed drawings right now. I think we're talking about what kind of things are possible or, you know, probable or better. So I just want to speak for myself about some of these items. And I see that Director Deppi has his hand raised. Director Deppi.
I just wanna kind of second something that you said. We've looked at this, I mean, more than a year. Director Sheriff Swat and I did a presentation years ago. It's, with pandemic, two years kind of gets lost in the timeframe, but it was a long time ago. So this has been looked at for a very long time, but certainly over a year of intense looking at alternatives in a very specific manner. And this is, this is the only alternative that even has potential for working that we've, we've, we have right now. And I think it would be irresponsible to not at least investigate it. And so I agree with you that we really need to at least look at just the feasibility of it. Just not to shut it out, because they're really, we don't have any, anything else on the table. So it would be irresponsible to not go ahead with it. And going ahead doesn't mean we've decided on it. But looking into it is, I don't see any harm, and again, it would be irresponsible not to do it.
Yeah, I guess I would just find, I just, and my comments by saying, when we did the community center renovation in partnership with the KCC and, and we've tried everything we can in our last meeting to assure the KCC that we understand their importance to the community. In fact, they provide, you know, they are our contractor to provide these services. So we work together to do this for the community. And, you know, I feel like there's been a bit of disinformation that we have tried very hard to say that this is part of the, part and parcel. So hopefully this clears up some of that. And yeah, I, I just think it is, it is incumbent upon us to explore these things, because somebody else will come around and say, well, didn't you consider that? And either the answer is yes, it works, no, it doesn't, but we have to think about it as an option. I want to give the general manager an opportunity to maybe talk a little bit about some of what we, you know, we've heard and talked about and to help us, you know, kind of clarify how you plan to proceed if we authorize this.
Thank you. Yes, when I met with the, with the architect, he came out, he actually did a site visit, started looking around, and immediately with his professional background, he was running by a number of scenarios. What if, what if, is this a possibility? Is that a possibility? I did explain to him that it is imperative and a priority of your board that KCC is part of what is going to be planned and that they're going to end up, you know, we're not going to just leave them out there. That that's, that has to be integrated in whatever, whatever plans we come up with. And again, he, this is what he does. He loves this kind of work. And I mean, he had several ideas about things we could do with the annex building as well as with building E. But he wanted to take a good look at everything. He is well versed in what the police need. He's also worked closely with the chief and the chief. And he has had some discussions, both with and without me, regarding what their needs are. And so, again, this, this does not commit your board to go into the park. But as has already been pointed out by several of your board members, it, this is something that you need to take a look at and help you make an informed decision. For the public, just that they would understand, no decision like this will be made without a noticed public meeting where you actually focus in on it after without a noticed public meeting where you actually focus in on it after a recommendation. So the time or the the timeline would be for the architect to take a look at all the options. And I certainly, we can expand that to include options, to include the parking lot for down along Arlington. Take a look at the options, come up with some possibilities and present them for your board so that you can make an informed decision.
Thank you. I would expect that part of his research would be to assess what is at least currently being done with the recreation program, even just to get a, you know, an apples to apples, you know, understanding of what what their current usage is. This is how we did it with the community center. I mean, that was further along in in when we did, you know, more space planning, but it is part of the preliminary investigation, I would expect.
Yes, this is merely a first step by your board and it mirrors what you did at three oh three Arlington. There was a possibility of moving into that building, but we, we did not know, you did not know exactly how feasible that was until it was actually given a good look by a by a professional.
All right, if there is no more board discussion or board comments, then I will go ahead and 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 make the motion that we approve contracting with Sway Myers Architects to assess, review and prepare concept designs of building E and the annex building, looking at all the things we've talked about today. Sorry, General Manager Benson, do you have something else to add?
Yes, and I also want to make sure that if your board wants me to have him look also at the parking lot.
Yeah, so I'll take a show of hands or comments from board members if just having a look at that as a potential possibility. Again, we don't own that end of the parking lot, but you know, he can look at the whole thing and I suppose just tell us it's, you know, is there any objection to that on the board?
I think it's fine as long as it doesn't cost too much money.
Yeah, I I would agree. I think, Rick, that, you know, we have an amount not to exceed nine thousand dollars. And if it means sort of, go ahead, Director Deppi.
Yeah, I think you bring up a good point. If it dilutes what he's doing with building E and the annex, then I'd rather, I'm not against looking at the parking lot whatsoever, but if it's going to delay this kind of information or the design or if it's going to, again, dilute the value of what he's doing, then I would be opposed to it. And then we should just come up with a separate contract to have him look at the parking lot. Because I think parking lot also needs, certainly the Chief of Police to weigh in on that very heavily. And there's, there's a lot more considerations because you can put a modular there, you have to run utilities. There is, you know, the Fire District wanted to move there originally and they decided not to go there. So there's a lot of considerations for the parking lot that are not really in the same line as building E and the annex. And so I guess I'd, I'd rather have a separate item. We could even have it next week if we have to for the parking lot.
I maybe he could just answer the question, you know, really how, like, like Chris sort of said, I think this is, I think both that and the the area south of the library have been looked at and thought at least discussed. And we know that there are problems with both of those. So I I think for the parking lot, maybe just a quick assessment of whether it's worth really pursuing. You know, based on, given all the other options at this time, I think I I would probably agree that it's probably the least attractive. But he could maybe just give us a really like, not spend a lot of time right now. And do you know what I'm trying to say here, Rick?
Yes, that it won't, that it won't be as many focus, but that it is worth taking a look at. When I talked to him about building E and the annex from the last board meeting, there was more focus on E. But he says it's better to look at all, everything because there's commonalities between all the different locations there. And so he can roll that all into one report. I I would, I can't speak for him, but I would suggest that if your board could give me a somewhat higher not to exceed figure so that he can take a look at the parking lot and and do a, do a job there. His time is valuable and and he does get compensated for it. But I, I don't believe that he would.
I'm thinking of an amount not to exceed five hundred dollars to take a look at that parking lot and say, here's the challenges that you're going to face if you want to put a building or modular in that parking lot. I'm not thinking that he's going to work up any kind of conceptual drawings. I'm thinking of something that's more or less the back of an envelope. You know, here's, here's your challenges.
You see, you see the right person to to know that, I guess the question is.
Well, he's an architect.
Well, but does he deal with modular buildings and running utilities to modular? That's the question.
You have to.
Yes, he's, and he actually specializes in public buildings with significant background in police buildings. That was, that was the criteria that was used before. I would suggest if your board is comfortable with giving me a not to exceed figure of ten thousand rather than nine thousand to address additional issues.
I'm willing to do that because I I just, there's people who who want us to consider that. Hopefully, you know, it's only not to exceed. He doesn't have to actually get that high. And he really doesn't have to spend a lot of time on it. So, I mean, I'm I'm comfortable doing that. But I I think you need to give him just some clear direction that this is just not the big, the big focus at the moment.
Yes, and that brings up a good point. That is a not to exceed figure. He, he actually indicated that he thought he would be coming in at less than that. But but the figure he did give me of nine thousand was not to exceed.
Director Deppi, anything more?
Oh, no, sorry.
All right, so I'm going to amend the motion to and approve contracting with SWAT Myers Architects to assess, review and prepare concept designs of building E and the annex building and a review of the parking lot as a potential site in an amount not to exceed ten thousand dollars.
I'll second that.
I think Chris Deppi was first.
Yeah, he beat me.
So we're going to do a roll call vote on this.
All right, Director Deppi? Vice President Logan?
Yes.
Director Detoli?
Yes.
Our Director Sheriff Swat is absent. President Hassan?
Yes.
And motion carries four zero.
Okay, we are going to be adjourning now into a closed session. And this line stays open and then I will, after the closed session, come back to it and report out. Usually the report is there's nothing to report. So just want to advise people who, if they want to stay on the line, it's usually not very exciting. I want to thank everybody participating and urge you to keep doing that. And I hope to be speaking to you in the future, in the near future, about this continued challenge that we all face balancing police services and our park and recreation. Thank you.
Good evening, I am Board President Sylvia Hassai. The closed session adjourned at 9:34 PM. We gave direction to our negotiator regarding the matter of relocating the police to temporary quarters on San Pablo Avenue and there is nothing else to report. Good night.
Good evening, I am Board President Sylvia Hassai.